Ms. Blaylock, item number one, please.
Item number one is a rezoning of one lot located on the west side of Cobb Lane at 120 Cob Lane from an R-50 district to an R-99S district. It was recommended by the planning commission. This is in the police jurisdiction. It is not in this council district.
I think that's Councilwoman Riley, I think it is, isn't it? Is that right on item number one?
It's in the PJ. I don't know which one is the closest to.
I think it's the closest. You good? All right, item one is good.
Okay. Two is a rezoning for 2816 Pyramid Avenue from an A-G1 district to an M-1 district, to an M-1 district. And it was also recommended by the planning commission and is also in the PJ.
And again, I think that's closest to Councilwoman Beard, I believe.
No, this is closer to Councilwoman Riley.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay. So you're good with two? All right. Three, Ms. Blaylock.
Application for a package license by On Time 3403 Norman Bridge Road. We've already had the public hearing on this one. Mr. Smanzki requested it carried over.
Yeah, we'll be moving on that today. We're good.
You're good?
Yep.
All right.
Item four, ordinance amending the organizational chart for the city of Montgomery.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Reed, what's the update on this?
So essentially, when we, after the fact of us approving the last organizational chart, the city county personnel said we had to make some tweaks to it based on some procedural things. I don't know if the actual org chart is in your paperwork. I don't have it in front of me, but that's why we had to make a couple of tweaks to the org chart. So it's minor stuff. All the major stuff is still laid in and in place.
Okay, so all of the departments that were originally assigned to each one of the cabinet members is the same? It's just some of those sub departments, the department heads?
Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody got a feel what they want to do with this today?
Well, if it came through from the personnel department as some legal changes, then I'm okay with it. I just didn't, just wanted to ensure that we weren't having to go back and pack some more departments under one particular cabinet member and not spread it throughout the cabinet members like we had before.
Well, if anybody's got any questions, now's the time to ask them. All right.
Still reading?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Sir?
Mr. Jim Wright?
Okay. You good?
Yep.
Item number five, Ms. Blaylock.
Resolution authorizing the issuance, execution, sale, and delivery of not due at C-3 million principal amount G-O note of the city of Montgomery and payment thereof. And this is for the, Ms. Betty's up there. She'll explain it.
How are you?
I'm good.
Awesome. Basically, this is for the rolling stock that was put in certain departments' budget, like sanitation, street maintenance, traffic engineering. We have to have a resolution in order to go to the bank to let them pay the vendors as we get the invoices in. It's short-term, one year. At the end of that year, we will pay off all principal and any interest that's due at that time because the money's in the budgets of the general fund budget.
Okay.
Ms. Beville, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this something similar that Chris was talking about, rolling the trash trucks in and out?
It is.
Lease agreement, basically.
Yes.
So we're just kind of, we're doing, is, this is not a bond issue, right?
No, sir.
It's just borrowing from?
It's a short-term note.
PNC, right?
PNC, and we'll do it every year. It'll be a one-year note.
So you're going to pay it off a year, and then we're going to buy three million more the next year?
That or more, depending on what the city's needs are.
Okay.
Okay, this is just the beginning of it.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Would it be, would it be easier if we stretched it out a little longer than a year, or you, you've got it in there?
Well, actually, the leasing is for three years.
Right.
We'll roll on one-third of whatever they need the first year, then another third the second year. But they will have in their general fund budgets the monies that need to be paid towards that lease. We'll get it from the bank upfront. They pay the companies like Truck Works for the first year, the entire amount.
Okay.
Okay, and we pay it on the back end.
How long is it going to take to get the vehicles?
They're waiting on us right now.
Okay, good, good.
We got quite a few in. I don't know if anybody's here from any of those departments that can tell you how many they, they are and what types.
Sounds good. Thank you.
They're in Holland. We can't get this done fast enough.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Ms. Beville?
Hi.
Mr. President, I would, you know, like, I know fleet's a lot different. So with, when it comes to maintenance on these short-term lease vehicles, how would that work?
Okay, any just general maintenance, that's up to the city to take care of. But if anything major happens or comes up with the trucks, then they go to the lease or the equipment.
Oh, nice. I would love to know how we save at the end of the year, isn't it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody's good? All right, item six.
Resolution to allocate up to 8.5 million in ARPA funds to ARPA and ARPA Flex compliant current and future budget items and to reallocate current, certain current allocations.
Yeah, Jimmy, can you explain that to us just real quick so we all understand this?
Yes, real quick. So primarily, we're dealing with the, the city sewer project. The issue is, is based on how long that project's going to go with the preliminary engineering. We're just finishing up the, the actual study on that. We're not going to get the ARPA dollars obligated in time. So what we're, we're doing is, is moving some money around so we can fund that project and then do some other things in the ARPA realm with those dollars that we weren't, we won't be able to execute through the ARPA funds for that particular project. So this is, this gives us some breathing room to be able to be flexible, but still get that project off the ground.
Still get the sewer done for those folks?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And I think the county has already, I think the county has already acted on it.
They did that last week.
They have, they have.
Another question for that. Mr. Reed, where are we with the, how has the water board came in and played with this as far as the money that they applied for?
Um, I, I don't want to speak on that in a public forum.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not as informed on that as I need to be, so I can get back and get you that information out later today.
Okay.
I got, I got one question. When do we have to have the money spent or obligated? What, what year?
For the ARPA, December 31st of 2026.
2026.
So we're not going to start the sewer problem before September of 26?
It's starting, but the way that the money is pushed out, it'll take a little bit too long, is what he's saying. So they're going to use other funding that we have and push this funding that we had dedicated to another project.
So I, I guess my question, when do we anticipate it starting and finishing, the sewer project? When we plan to, plan to start and when do we think we're going to finish?
When we finish the outer loop.
Well, it is.
I won't say that. I won't say that. It's just the, the timing is such that, that's a large project and it, and the dollars have to be spent and allocated. Therefore, it won't be finished by 26. That's the point. So it won't be finished by then. So to, to get almost 80% into the project and then not be able to finish it with ARPA dollars, that's what we're trying to avoid here.
So, Mr. Reed, so we're ready to go with, we've got the design.
No.
Everything's ready to go?
No, it's not shovel-ready. That's the point. We're still in the preliminary engineering and all that piece. So we're not shovel-ready for that project.
And there is a presentation, counsel, if you all haven't seen the email.
I think it's tomorrow.
It's the 24th at 4:00 p.m.
Right.
And they'll do an update.
They're going to give you the findings of the, the, of the study that they did. So we're just at the end of the study. What comes next is preliminary engineering, which takes time. So as, so you see where we are with this. We're actually at the beginning of the project. We're not in the middle. We're nowhere close to the end. That's the point.
Everybody good? Item number seven, Ms. Blaylock.
Resolution authorizing agreement with Aldit for a new road from Wyssden Road to benefit Project South and Project Tide.
Anybody got any questions on that one?
No questions.
I don't think so.
Okay. Number eight, Ms. Blaylock.
Application for special retail more than 30 days license by Sage Events at 547 Northeastern Boulevard.
Mr. President, Vice President, I'm, I'm good with that.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right.
Item nine, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only doing business as Metro Petro at 2905 Lower Watanaka Road.
We'll talk about it in the council meeting, Mr. Protem.
Okay. That don't sound good.
I couldn't hear her.
We'll talk about it in the council meeting, she said.
All right. Item 10, resolution reappointing Blake Markham to the Board of Adjustments.
Everybody's good?
Item 11 has been withdrawn.
Okay.
Item 12, resolution appointing Penny Weaver to the museum board.
Okay.
13, resolution reappointing Wesley Stone to the planning commission. Then we have the demolitions for you to authorize and then the nuisances for the council to vote on.
All right. Anybody else got anything? All right, and the work session, speaking, Tim Tyler. Is Tim here? Yeah, come on up.
Middle, Tim. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Tim Tyler. I work for the district attorney's office here, Montgomery, where I supervise juvenile division. I've been there supervising that maybe 26 years. Four years prior to that, I did defense work involving juveniles. Councilman Mitchell asked me to be here today to, to tell you a little bit about what I do, what we do, and also to speak on some programs that, that we're doing right now. Currently, at the juvenile court, we have six dockets every week. We stay quite busy. We also come in for 72-hour hearings. That's where someone is arrested and they have to sit judge within 72 hours. If that falls on a holiday, a legal holiday, then we're required to be there as well. Currently, I have one other attorney that works with me and one support staff. Along the way, we lost one of our support staff positions, a victim service officer, and also handled our restitution matters. Currently, the thing that concerns me is the amount of gun violence in the city of Montgomery, especially involving juveniles. We have, I believe, seven in custody right now for murder and/or capital murder, which is unacceptable. We have seen a proliferation of firearms in this city among juveniles. I've seen more firearms that have been confiscated in the past three years, and I've seen probably in the last 15 years combined. It all started shortly after, after COVID. Also seeing a lot of firearms that have been altered with something called a switch. It'll take like a Glock handgun and turn it fully auto. And as some of you know, you can get .31 and .33 round magazines for Glocks and other pistols, and it acts just like a machine pistol. It, it doesn't stop until it's empty, unless, of course, it has a malfunction. Another thing that I've noticed over the past few years that go, that goes hand in hand with, with firearms among juveniles is the proliferation of marijuana. Marijuana's been around, but it's almost like everybody with a gun, you know, gets picked up with marijuana. And I know that driving, you know, along the city and the street, if you know what marijuana smells like, I mean, everybody's smoking it. When you combine smoking marijuana and other things with juveniles with guns, it's always going to be a recipe for, you know, disaster. We have some programs that we have run in the past. I'm going to talk about a past program, and then I'll let Ms. Beasley talk to you about current programs that we're running. And when I say we, talking about the DA's office in conjunction with other agencies, and I think even with the city of Montgomery. In the past, we had a program that I designed. It was called the GRAVE Program, G-R-A-V-E. It's the acronym for getting real about violence and its effect. That program used to be a two-weekend program that was ordered for first-time weapons offenders, nobody that's been charged with armed robbery or assault or worse yet, murder. But people that were catching on the front end with weapons, any type of weapon, actually. That went around for two weekends. We had a probation officer that was dedicated, among other things, to run that program. Over the years, that position got cut out, and there've been other entities that tried to run it, but it's not near as successful, and it's not in operation today. But the probation officer that ran it for us, we keep tabs on these juveniles, go out to about three years after they completed the program. And 87% of the participants that went through the program did not reoffend. Or at least didn't get caught.
Why is it not, why is it not in operation today, that program?
It's a program that fell by the wayside.
Is it a funding issue or just?
No, it was, the program I designed was made up of all volunteers. We had all sorts of people. We had people from the gang unit. We had people from the sheriff's department. To tell you how old the program was, Dr. Curvin Olmer, who's no longer with us, he was the coroner of Montgomery at the time, and he had compiled a video for me that I would show. We also had videos from inmate interviews that we used. We had parents of children that were lost to the streets by, you know, through violence, and also ones that, you know, found their way into the penitentiary because of violence.
How long did that program, how long, I didn't mean to interrupt you, how long did that program last?
I started in August of 1999. I got a grant from the U.S. Attorney's Office where we bought equipment. The program ran strong, I would say, for at least a good 10 years.
So 2009, around that, that time.
Thereabouts. And then, again, the position of the probation officer was not available anymore to run that. And so that program was passed down to other entities that we utilized as resources, but it just, it just wasn't, you know, wasn't the same.
And Mr. Tyler, that scare-street program was a phenomenal program.
You go ahead. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It was a great program.
I thought it was.
It was fabulous. As an educator, I had them in my class and it seemed like a great program.
Yeah, and we had members from Montgomery Public Schools.
Absolutely.
I think Mary Ellen Noon was there for years. We, we just had a good program. That's a program that I would like to see get back. Of course, I've participated in it as well on my own time on the weekend. Now, there are some programs that we're running now, some of, maybe one of which you may know about, maybe both, I don't know. But this is Ms. Eris Beasley. She is the director of Helping Montgomery Families Initiative. And I'm, I assume y'all know, well, don't let me assume. Do you, do you all have a working understanding of the?
Yeah, and she's going, I've got you, and I didn't mean, I wasn't forgetting you. He was just on the thing first. So, yeah, I was going to let Ms. Beasley tell us what all.
We, we have that program. That's a really good program. And we also have a new program, and I'll, I'll let Ms. Beasley tell you about that. Unless you have any further questions from me, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Beasley.
Mr. Tyler, question for you. I'm seeing so many runaway juveniles. So what do we have in place for those juveniles that, that, that we see so much of running away from home? Do we have any programs? What is family court doing to address those issues when it comes to those runaways?
Okay, on, on runaways, now, there has to be a petition filed with, with the juvenile court. They'll come out and file it. You know, the mere fact that you reported it to the Montgomery Police Department or to law enforcement is not going to be enough. So there will be petitions filed on all runaways. Now, a runaway under the juvenile code is considered a status offender. We cannot incarcerate status offenders in a secure detention setting. The only way that you can detain a, a status offender is if they have violated their, I think that'd be a certain age, 12, and they have to have violated a valid court order. And even then, there's a process. So as far as detaining them, that's not, that's not an option. Back in the day, we had a place called Mary's Place. I don't know if anybody remembers Mary's Place, but it was a shelter. I don't know how many shelters that we have now for, for, for juveniles. I know there's not any acute psychiatric beds for juveniles. We've been needing that in the city of Montgomery for years. We don't have that. And a lot of the people we see, the juveniles we see, have mental health issues, diagnosable mental health issues. But to answer your question, Councilman Mitchell, I don't know of all the resources. That, that's more of a probation services question. But I, I will say that they are starting to file runaway petitions, so there's going to have to be some sort of resources out there to be utilized.
And my last question, Mr. Tyler, you kind of addressed it. So when you do come in contact with those juveniles that have mental illness, how do the court, family court handle those, those particular cases?
Right now, there is a, a mental health liaison that, that comes to court, Tommy Sue Meher, that is sitting in on everything and helping to coordinate services. And of course, CareStar provides a lot of services. But the one thing we need in Montgomery, being the capital city, we need beds, acute beds for juveniles that are in psychiatric crisis. There's nothing. And I had asked at a previous meeting why that is, and they said that the certification process is too, too tedious. But yet, we've got places in Dothan, Houston County, Jefferson County, Madison County.
Right.
So how, really, how difficult is it? I don't know. I'm just, that's just a question I have for them, and really didn't get an answer.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Protem, just listening to a lot of the information that the gentleman just placed in front of us, I think that this is something good to get with the Public Safety Committee and have some work in progress going and continue probably a task force or something. But I really do think that it's something that we could jump on as a council to get an initiative going.
Okay.
I got one, I got a question. We, we all smell marijuana as we ride down the road all the time. We can't, we're not supposed to drink and drive. What is the rule on that? How, how do you determine?
It's just like a, I mean, it's just like a DUI.
But how do you, how do you test for it?
Well, I mean.
Tell a good joke?
Well, first of all, you, you first of all, I'm not a police officer, I've got one in here, but y'all have a, I don't know if we have drug recognition experts here that are trained or not, but it's, you know, it, it, it's just like anything else, based on erratic driving and, and the odor of marijuana is very distinct.
No, no, I, I agree with all of those things, but we were told earlier it's kind of hard to pick anybody up because we don't have a test, like, that.
I think, I know what you're saying, like a breathalyzer?
Breathalyzer, blood test, anything. None, none of that's going to show up.
That may be a question for PD.
There are, and I can't speak for the Montgomery Police Department, but I do know that there are certain people who were called drug recognition experts that are trained in trying to detect what type of substance the person may be influenced by. But I can't. That's out of my.
We'll ask PD when they get here later.
Mr. Mitchell, with, in times past, in the elementary school, we used to have programs that people came in once a month, the DARE program, Mr. McGruff, all those kind of things. We had law awareness programs. All of those were in the elementary schools. You probably all grew up with that era, and you probably remember this also, Mr. Tyler.
They didn't have that when I was in school.
Well, I'm old. But anyway, we've got to start young.
Yeah.
And putting it back into Montgomery Public School system.
I think the, I don't know, I can't speak for the sheriff's office, but I think they still have some involvement with that.
McGruff is through, uh, PD. They, they have it, but, uh.
They have it as well?
Yeah, they do. And they kind of ran it for, I, I asked about that last year. They had high interest in it last year, so I'm sure they would this year. And I know they talked about it a little bit during budget season. So it's something we probably just need to break up.
And the DARE program as well.
Mr. Protem, and I think Ms. Beasley would be able to talk, because she's, she follows up on the, the DA, and I think the DA has something at Edie Nixon. So she'll be able to kind of speak on her program and whether it's the other one as well.
Absolutely, and thank you for the opportunity, program director, for Helping Montgomery Families Initiative. And I'm sure most of you have heard of it. I want to say our history goes back to 2007, and we have continued to function in partnership with the city of Montgomery, the county commission, and definitely Montgomery Public Schools. Just in brief, with us, we are not only doing suspension, but we are working with Montgomery Public Schools in terms of truancy, as well as some other programs that we have, that have developed over the years and that we are developing. I have been back as director for a year, so it was kind of a rebirth after COVID to bring some of our main elements back. Just to talk briefly about suspension, and it's always Little Johnny that I use as an example. Little Johnny is at Edie Nixon, and he is suspended for fighting on that first offense of the offenses that we monitor. His parent, guardian, whomever, will get what we call a warning letter. Little Johnny. And we hope that that warning letter sent to the parent will deter any further action. Hopefully, there's a conversation, maybe some home consequences or, or things like that. Little Johnny fights again. His parent or guardian gets what we call an assessment letter. With that assessment letter, the, the parent, guardian is asked to call us. They are put in touch with a, a case officer, and consequently, an assessment is scheduled. We do our assessments in the office. I'm going to be real frank with you. Back in the day, when I was case officer in that 2008 through 15, we went to every home. But things have, have changed. The environment is different now, and the safety is paramount of our case officers. So majority are done in our office, but if there are situations where, as recently, we had a parent who was on bed, bed rest, she was pregnant. Some don't have transportation. We look at the address and, and come to the conclusion that it's safe enough for our case officer to go or someone go with her or, or him in that case. With that assessment, it's a, a matter of intaking and getting information, bringing it back, writing the report, meeting with our multidisciplinary team every Wednesday to present these cases. And I'm, I'm proud to say that we have been busy. Anywhere from six to eight cases are, are presented to our partners. Our partners range from the Family Guidance Center, Family Sunshine Center, Child Protect, Boys and Girls Club, CareStar, and I could go on and on and on. We're probably up to 18 to 20 active partners who come via teams each Wednesday. They hear the case. And the good thing about them is that if they've had any involvement with Little Johnny or any of Little Johnny's family members or the parents, they bring that information to the table. Because most often, at the time of that assessment, they're not going to tell us everything. So we go kind of through the back door to get the information that we probably should have gotten from them. So it gets. so it gives us a broader view of potentially what's going on to as why Little Johnny might be having the behavioral problems at school. Consequently, we end up doing, with that team of community partners, an intervention plan. It's shared with the family, sometimes being transparent with you, sometimes they decline some of the interventions, and they are told, hey, if Little Johnny comes back, we're coming back to these interventions. But the majority of the time, the families cooperate and work through the program. Our case officers have had to get creative and meet parents where they are, whereas you might recall them, now we use the Remind app, and if we hear about anything going on in the community, they get it immediately. We are tracking these children using the North Carolina Assessment Tool, and I need to say that, anywhere from three to six months. Are we looking for perfection, of course, are we gonna get it, no, but an improvement in behavior, whereas our program is to prevent them from ending at the juvenile youth facility. Aside from that, we work with MPS, with truancy, we send out alert letters. I want to tell you all, from the holiday last week, we sent out 2,695 letters. That was for the month. And it's an alert letter at the second unexcused absence. When it gets to the fifth unexcused absence, Montgomery Public Schools sends out an early warning letter, and we host that once or twice a month down at the courthouse. And the parents come because if you've gotten a letter, come to the courthouse, they afraid, don't want to get in trouble, so the attendance there, as Mr. Mitchell can testify, are large groups that attend, and they come, and they meet with the District Resource Officer, they sign the compulsory letter, so that's our collaboration with Montgomery Public Schools. In addition to those two programs, we have Open Doors. Open Doors is if there's a homicide that takes place in the community, we are notified by our Chief Investigator that if any children were in the vicinity, heard something, saw something, unfortunately, maybe got some residue of some sort on them, we are contacted and then immediately reach out to the family. We have our bullying app, the posters are in all the schools, we have postcards that if a child does not, student does not want to go to the principal or the counselor, they can text that no bullying to the app, it goes to Darrell Bailey, he contacts us. And Idly is another program, we are in ten schools with fifth grade classes. We have a curriculum that talks about the judicial system, police officers, law enforcement, drugs, bullying, all the kind of issues that you would expect. And last but not least, we recently got a small grant where we're starting an in-house mentoring program, and we're looking for mentors, I just want to say that to everybody, that will take some time to be a part of some of these children's village. Most of our families are single mother residencies that need that extra support, so we are embarking on doing the individual connection as well as group in terms of our mentoring program. So, that's a whole lot in brief, and I will stop.
No, but I have one question. My question, are we doing any kind of parenting classes with the student with the disciplinary areas? To explain to them how we can, because sometimes your parents have a disciplinary problem as well as the child, so are we working with our parents on this disciplinary area?
Absolutely, thank you for the question, Ms. Riley. When I talk about the family, if I didn't say it, even though I talked about Johnny, we're looking at the whole family, the mom, the dad, the grandmom, the auntie, the other siblings. And in terms of your question, family guidance is our resource for directing them to parent guidance, so they are on the meeting each week, and when it's decided that, you know, Johnny mama just let him do whatever, that they should go to the parenting class, so yes.
Is, Mr. Proten, is that a requirement in your program for the parents to attend the, or is that highly recommended?
It's highly recommended, as I mentioned before, some decline, some say they have it, but again, what we let them know, if Little Johnny comes back, we're coming back with these interventions. And ironically, some of them may not get it initially, but they do come back.
So, what happens with those parents, if they are continuing, those kids are repeat kids in your program, what happens in that family unit after three or four times of your office seeing those kids in that family?
Great question, and to be perfectly honest with you, we are making every effort that we can to work with them and to encourage them to embark on the program and the interventions. When they don't, we can and do provide that information to our point of contact. You know, there are some things beyond that, if Little Johnny is continuously having issues, that can happen, but it's not, we can't make that happen.
So, do you go to DHR from that point?
No.
No recommendations to DHR at all?
So, we are working hard to have, as has been in the past, DHR representative on our team, it was years ago, but as they are transitioning, we have not been yet able to get that partner back.
Okay, I got a couple more questions, Mr. Proten. So, the mentoring program.
Yes.
Is that in conjunction with someone else, or I just really would like for us to receive some information on that so we can help push that out for you in the community?
It is, my thought was, there used to be big brothers, big sisters here in Montgomery, and it went away. I don't know where it went, but we found in a lot of cases, we'll say Little Johnny needs a mentor. Some of the mentoring programs in Montgomery are great, but it comes with cost.
Right.
Our parents can't afford that. So, our HMFI Mentors 101 is where we are looking to have mentors to come on board. We have a pool of mentors that I can take Little Johnny, and hopefully, Mr. Pruitt would be willing to be his mentor. No financial obligation, check on him at the school, call him, maybe you may hear about something that would be instrumental, but just to become a part of his village.
I know I saw an article with the Jefferson County Office coming down and stretching back, because I think they started in Montgomery, ended up back up in Birmingham, and they're coming back. So, it was an article about that, about big brother, little sister, big sister. So, it's something I'm probably looking to. Next thing was, so with your resource, I know you, I heard you say, if the kids are around any crime or somehow affected, you all reach out to them. What are you doing when you're reaching out to them, what kind of resource?
So, that was in reference to the Open Doors program, when there's a homicide, so again, our Chief Investigator sends us the information, the parent contact. You know, we try to wait a little bit, because you remember, now they're in the space of planning a funeral. And so, once we contact our program supervisor, Mr. Cameron, he makes the call, of course, we extend our condolences, and then we are working to see what the needs are, and primarily, to try to refer them to one of our counseling partners.
Oh, awesome, last question. And this is another request for information, because I know you may not, or may or may not know this offhand. I would like to know, how many kids from those 295 truancy letters, and however many more you've done in the last three school years, and those that have been through your suspension program have committed major crimes? Would you all know that?
As far as that 2,900 and whatever, those were truancy, those were those students who were not in school or were missing from class. As far as the suspension, yes, there have, unfortunately, there have been some few that we've seen that worked through our suspension program that have been seen involved in some incidents, but we got plenty of success stories, plenty of them.
I'm glad to hear that, but the reason I asked that was for a reason. I mentioned earlier about the council putting the programs that the gentleman mentioned into our Public Safety Committee to kind of start some kind of task force. Those numbers that you pull from your program would be good data to use in starting this task force and finding out how IRPD can work closely with you all and how we can track those kids, because I think it's really important that we, Ms. Julie mentioned it earlier, start them real early. Those kids, if they were affected and you contacted them, and if they came through your suspension, if they were truant, and now they've committed a crime.
And we can provide that information.
Thank you.
Ms. Beasley, I got one question. Does, are you guys work, involve our Office of Violent Prevention with your work?
You know, we've talked about it a little bit, and I think that's something that would be ideal, that we collaborate, matter of fact, Mr. Cameron brought it up the other day, so, yes, we need to do that.
Okay, all right, I see Roe in the back, right back there.
Mr. Proten, so I can kind of answer Counselor Johnson, and I don't know if Mr. Tyler mentioned it, we do have the CHENS petition, I mean, the CHENS program, the CHENS program with the parents, can you tell them about the CHENS program, Tim, about the counseling session on the CHENS?
The courts had a policy of not, when I say the court, the system, not getting involved with necessarily telling people how to raise their children, okay? But if a parent is having problems with a child, there is a, and we utilize this very heavily in the early warning, and the early warning is where a student has continued to miss, all efforts, letters have failed, parents get summoned to come to a location downtown in the courthouse. There is a letter that the parents have to sign and, you know, read and be explained if necessary, that says, from this point forward, if your kid continues to miss school, you can be charged. And I've got a couple of them this week already that I've got to try, parents. So, in the same vein, we also give the parent an opportunity if the parent's really trying. A lot of times, parents try really hard, but these juveniles are just gonna do just the opposite of what the parents ask them. So, there's a process, it's called a CHENS package, that's acronym for Child in Need of Supervision. The parent is required to go to five counseling sessions, and they are given a laundry list of different people that they can go to. Once they have shown that they have completed the five counseling sessions, whether their child agrees to go with them or not, then they can come out to the juvenile court and file a petition against their child as being ungovernable, out of control, then the courts will step in with some type of sanctions and resources and help at that point. Again, they're not gonna be locked up, but there is a program out there to assist the parent through the courts.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Tyler, Ms. Beasley, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Anybody got anything else?
We do, we have someone on Zoom to present us for the work session, and we have Robert that needs to kind of update us on the trails.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, you want to go ahead and update us on the trails? Mike, is the Zoom up? Okay.
Good afternoon, yes, ma'am, so I wanted to give y'all an update on where we are with the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Bicycling Pedestrian Trails Project Proposals. And I did give you all a one pager, which you should have had at your seat, so you've got that particular copy. We do have a multidisciplinary team that is working on this particular project, everybody from River Region Trails, who was in partnership with the city to complete the trails, master plan citywide, city engineering, traffic engineering, the Grants Department, Mayor's Office, and a couple of board members from River Region's Trails. And what you have before you is the actual list of projects, and if you all recall, five million dollars was obligated to this particular effort, and what you have in front of you is the list of projects that we plan on basically spending the funds on. And so, we'll, I'll just kind of go down each one, there are a total of four projects. The first one is the Riverfront Greenway Extension and Other Quick Impact Projects, one million dollars for that one, the Selma to Montgomery National Historic Trail, at one million dollars, which would, which would take it from the Montgomery County line all the way to the downtown square, Court Square Fountain. And back up to the Riverfront Greenway Extension Project, we're talking about going in both directions, going all the way up to the Shady Street Park, all the way back over to Maxwell Boulevard with that. Jackson Cut, which is the abandoned railway project that runs basically from downtown all the way out to Jackson Hospital, Acquisition and Design, two million dollars for that project. And the last one is Cypress Nature Preserve, Design and Engineering and Acquisition and Basic Infrastructure at that location, which is just adjacent to the city lot. Our next steps that we're gonna go forward with now is preparing a request for qualifications, requests for proposals for multiple engineering and design consultants to actually do design work, to get that design work done, and we're talking about getting that RFP, RFQ process started and completed within roughly about thirty days, and after then, go into full design and come up with cost estimates on how much it's actually gonna cost, to see how far we can actually go with the amount of money that we have set aside for this project.
Robert, have we started working, negotiating with the railroad for the Jackson Cut property?
Yes, sir, we are beginning to enter into negotiation with that, and that's kind of all I want to really say about it.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Robert.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Mike, are we ready?
What'd you say?
He's trying to log in. This is, so while he's doing that council, this is ClearGov, doing the National League of Cities, once, when I go up every time, I bring a resource back, y'all know. So, ClearGov, this is just one I want us to look at and kind of consider. It'll be a big ticket item, but this is something that we had a couple of department heads with us on our last trip to Atlanta, and we saw it, and I wanted to present it as a whole for the council, and then it can go into the departments, we can probably put it in the committee for the commerce afterwards, but I wanted you all to see the overall view of what this program does, and we have an open data portal with the city right now that has not been effective the last two years I've been on council, there is no updated information, and it's not user-friendly for the public, because a lot of information they contact us for, they should be able to access. And so, this program, ClearGov, they have someone that, because we, and the reason it hasn't been, from my understanding, is because the person that was running that project for open data is no longer with us. So, ClearGov assigned someone to us in this price that they give us, which they'll share, it actually should come through your email after the council meeting, where they have a price breakdown, but they'll assign someone to us, they'll keep it updated, they'll talk with the departments. So, that way, like these projects that Robert just talked to us about, we can see it at a council level for a big picture view, but we can also have the people, the constituency, the city, see what we're doing and where these projects are moving, because they got questions, and the answers should be right there. And so, good to go? Okay, we are good. Mr. LaPlor, can you hear me?
Can y'all hear me okay?
Not yet, I hear him a little bit.
I can hear you great.
Okay. Is he gonna be on the screen for us, Mike, so he can share screen?
No, I'm sharing my screen now, Marsha, I think that's you that I'm hearing. Let me know if you guys can see my screen.
It is, Marsha, it is. All right, we see you now. Zoom him out for us, Mike, so we can see it. And he's gonna do a brief presentation for us, but I gave him a little overview of who you are, but you go ahead, Mike, if I don't.
Great, great, just to double check here, you guys can hear me all right, though? Okay, great, great, well, hey, thank you, everybody, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening, my name's Michael LaPorte, I'm a Senior Solutions Consultant here for ClearGov. Been with the company for a number of years, and really, you know, my big focus has kind of been on the southern portion of the country here, both cities and counties. Actually gave a demonstration this afternoon for this tool, for NACO, the National Association of Counties for their southeast region. So, I speak with folks around your area quite frequently, really looking forward to speaking with you tonight, you know, about our planning tool, right? So, at ClearGov, to give the folks a brief background, we have tools that do really a number of things, help build the budget, help create budget documents, and the tool that we're going to speak about tonight, that y'all are looking at, is our Planning Vehicle Tool, what we call our Clear Plans. And when we talk about our plans, right, you know, I talk to folks, and I typically start and say, okay, what type of plan are you looking to accomplish, right? And I met Marsha back at the National League of Cities Conference, pretty far back, actually, now that I'm thinking about, a couple months, I was gonna say a couple weeks, but a couple months back down in Atlanta, and I talked to her about, hey, what type of plan are you trying to accomplish, or plans, because many folks are building multiple plans, right? I've been working with the city of Little Rock, to give y'all an example, they're using our tool in a number of differing ways. They're using our tool in a number of differing ways. Certainly, the large one is at the strategic plan level, right? A high level, detailed strategic plan. But you also see others, whether it's capital improvement plans, comp plans, economic plans, et cetera, across the board. And again, our tool really spans on all of that. The big piece that I then come to folks and say is, where are you, right? In terms of building of your plan? For some, I would say about 30% of the folks I speak with say, you know, we haven't really ever built a plan. Or when we, you know, when we're building it, it's a pretty rough plan, Mike. And they're starting with a blank document. Well, our tool for starters, from the building perspective, makes it really easy to choreograph and build out your plan from the high level to the goals, right down to the action items that you need to take to accomplish those. I'll say this, though. 70% of the folks I speak with, there is a plan in place. They're already building one. I think it was someone else at that National League of Cities Conference said as I was speaking to them, you know, my building of the plan, yeah, it can be a pain point, but it's not our struggle. Our struggle is the execution. Our struggle is the monitoring and the updating of progress internally and externally. And you're gonna hear me talk about both of those this evening here. So when we talk about building a plan, you know, we talk about that journey, right? That start to finish process, like anything else, like building of a budget, same thing, building of a plan here. And we talk about the initial point of starting and building that plan. I mentioned before, many folks come in and they've got a blank Microsoft Word document or Excel spreadsheet that they're trying to then choreograph with a number of differing folks. And that collaboration can be difficult, right? My old adage is kind of a lot of cooks in the kitchen can make things very difficult, especially if you're not easily able to assign differing portions. You then talk about the communication, again, internally and externally. And I separate those while they certainly overlap. I separate them because of just this big distinction. Internal communication is just as important as external in this sense. You need to know what's going on internally so that you can adapt and evolve and make changes. As we talk about plans, certainly a one-year plan, never mind a multi-year plan, is not gonna always go according to that plan. There's going to be hiccups, there's going to be changes or alterations along the way. And having that communication internally is important, just as important, though, is externally. The ability to present this in an interactive fashion, to provide updates externally, you know, throughout the year, rather than a static document that kind of just resides on your website. We want something that you guys can update, whether it's really biweekly, monthly, quarterly. Again, that's completely up to y'all. But something, again, that has that engagement piece. And when we're talking engagement, engagement is what? It's progress. What progress are we making? Again, internally, how are we tracking that progress? But externally, how are we displaying that and showing folks, hey, this is the progress that we're making? This is how we're growing. These are the plans that we have and this is how we're acting on them. And I've already touched on this a little bit, but the adjustments. I call them the hiccups, right? Again, that long plan here is not going to go to plan at all times. But the big thing that I speak to folks about is, instead of being reactionary, being able to see something ahead of time and come in with a plan. You know, like this evening, right? You guys get together, you know, every week, biweekly, some it's once a month. Wouldn't it be great if you could sign in, see what the progress or see what's going on in the overall plan? You know, individual goal or action item. See that there is a hiccup or a delay, something like that. And instead of having to wait for the meeting to be told that, show up at that meeting with a plan, with an alteration, with an idea as to how to fix it rather than that delay. So for ClearGov, right, our tool really hits upon all of these. And we're gonna hop right in here in just a moment. But again, ready to start, an easy tool that helps you create that plan year over year from scratch or carries over from your prior year. Allows for multiple collaborators. We have an unlimited user base. So whether it's your individual department heads that you're assigning specific portions to your plan, or certainly all the way up at the top for the folks in the room this evening on the board, y'all can have your own access points here as well. That full collaboration. I mentioned already, the ability to communicate that internally and externally is both immense, showing that progress and being able to evolve with those adjustments here.
Hey, Michael, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
We ended up with some updates throughout the meeting and I'm gonna have to ask you, can you wrap it up in five minutes?
Yes, 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 yes. All right. Let's do this.
He said maybe starter, maybe three.
All right. So let's do, no, no problem, no problem. So let's do this. Let's look at a live example. Instead of showing the back office and how to build it, right? Let's look at a couple of live examples. This is Flowery Beach down in Georgia here. This is right off of their website. These were the first folks that took advantage of our tool here. We're really excited. You can click right through this. Again, an engagement piece so that folks can go on and see your plan, see how the action is taking place. Certainly, this is the background information, but then get into those focus areas. See overall progress updates. See budget allocations, what the dollar or percentage that you're allocating for each progress is. Folks can also click inside of these and again, see that progress in real time. You can use our charts tool to build out KPIs that again, are interactive. This is an example right off of Flowery Branch's website. Your residents can go through, just like yourselves on the board, can see those goals that are being associated to them. And you can click inside of those as well to see the action items that are being taken to hit those overall goals here. So again, a really interactive tool, and I know that was lightning quick. I just wanted to try to show you guys two things. One, the easy navigation. For someone that has no idea what a strategic plan is, they can easily navigate to a specific area. And two, the in-depth detail on the plans that you're not only able to create on the forefront, but show the progress over periods of time here as well. So I'll start to wrap up there. I apologize. I wanted to go through, Marshay, as we kind of talked about, to introduce everyone here. I hope I didn't overstay my welcome, though. I apologize.
No, I do thank you. What I'm gonna do is from this point, I'm gonna, during the council meeting, we can, I can put something on the floor. I want to put you in a committee with me so we can discuss this more detail. But I just want to give an overall view to the entire council. But we'll put you in a committee and talk to the department heads and cabinet members. And then we'll go from there.
Okay. And what I can do too is send a couple of these. Like I said, this is a live example here. I've got another one from Toquesta, Florida here. Again, live examples that I can send y'all that, you know, on the little free time that you have, you can go around and click around and take a look for yourselves as well.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thanks, y'all. Have a great evening.
You too.
Take care.
Ms. Brendan, before we wrap it up real quick, two seconds. Mr. Conway, can you come up to the microphone, please, sir? We want to know about bagging all the leaves, where we're at with that. No, I'm just kidding. We, I wanted to personally, and I know the council did, want to thank you for your service. I know February the first is your last day.
Oh, wow, thank you so much for your time with us.